At this time, I'd like to say first that when we opened the meeting, the camera was not here. We did open on time at 5:00 and went into executive session. And now I'd like a motion to go out of executive session.
Uh huh.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in regular meeting. So now have the pledge of...
Is there a different copy? I can't get any of them.
You can't get on?
For doing diagnostic thing.
There we go. The ever question?
Yes.
At this time, I'll have our pledge of allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. Do we have any agenda modifications for tonight? We do not, so we'll move on to pride.
Mr. President, I move to accept the agenda as stated.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Hey, I'm still new at this job, you know, I gotta... Now, we can have pride.
I'll be giving an overview of summer programs... Oh, thanks, Wayne. We'll be giving an overview of summer programs later, and certainly, there's a lot to be proud of there, so I'll just wait and save that. But related to summer programs, we did receive a letter from Duchess Outreach, and it was a congratulatory letter to acknowledge that the students from the Summer Bridge Program for their outstanding efforts in donating 750 food items for the food pantry. So excellent learning lesson in paying it forward and contributing to our community. So, you know, thanks to Cora and the Summer Bridge Program for having these programs in place for our students, so they should be very proud of that donation. And we'll have to share this with Gail.
I'd like to point out that the donation was an integral part in the curriculum as it was developed, so that it was all a part of why and what they were doing and why and who they were conferring that on. So it was not just, let's collect food and donate it. It had something to do with the actual curriculum. So I think that's important to know.
Absolutely, thanks Doug. And again, there's a lot of our presentations tonight that really touch on pride, so I'll keep this very brief. But I do want to talk about one very important announcement, and that is, we have two of our very own who have received the Award for Excellence from the Mid-Hudson School Study Council. And that celebration takes place on October 9th at Anthony's Pier 9. It's a four-county celebration. There's always between 500 and 600 people. So I am very pleased and honored to announce that Mr. Doug Heater, our board president, will be recognized for his excellence in school board service. So congratulations, Doug, and we'll send out the invite. So anybody who wants to join us and you for the dinner can certainly do so. At a later board meeting, we'll kind of read some of the things that people wrote about Doug in the nomination. But first and foremost, what comes to mind is the volunteer work that he does at Violet Avenue School, his years of service on the board, his subcommittee work, and certainly, his attendance record at everything to do with the arts in our district. We started to make some calculations, and I think it was up to 260 minimum per year. So congratulations, Doug. And to nominate, we had administrators, teachers, so many people who chimed in, so it was a big effort.
And the other person?
And the other person I would like to recognize is the Award for Excellence in Support Services goes to Deb Rosen, our district clerk. And part of that application process or the nomination process actually was really in recognition not only of Deb's extraordinary work here as a district clerk, moving us from board docs to voter software, to just keeping us moving forward in the 21st century with technology and even how the votes are set up. That combined with the work that Deb does in our region and across New York State as a district clerk who is leading the way for all other district clerks in New York State. She is a frequent presenter at state and local conferences for district clerks. And so it's not just what she does for us, it's that she has taken her role as a leader of district clerks and has really contributed back to her field. So congratulations, Deb.
Now we're to the presentation, but I'd like to just say one thing before we start. I would like, starting tonight and forevermore, that presentations be 10 minutes, no longer. They can be less, but no longer. And that I'd ask the board members not to ask questions until the presentation is complete. I feel that way. If it goes to half an hour, then it's 20 minutes on us and not... It doesn't make the presenter look like they have taken up a half an hour of the meeting. In the same vein, I would like questions to be on target and concise. Especially tonight, we have a big, a long agenda, so I would like to see... Don't not ask questions, but if you add a story or whatever with the question, that's not helping things. So I would like to move along as quickly as I... as we can without inhibiting discussion. Now you can all be mad at me, that's fine. But, okay, so let's go with letter C data.
Well, I have a few more under...
Oh, you have some more stuff?
Yeah. Under superintendent's report, so moving away from pride to superintendent's report, I'll be brief.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I forgot one piece of pride, and I want to order a couple of extra copies of this to be displayed, both at Haveland and here at district offices. This is a photo of our graduation at Haveland Middle School. It was taken by the Poughkeepsie Journal, and for $12 a pop, we can get copies of this. I'll pass this around to the board members. It's actually a curved view. It's an extraordinary photograph of our beautiful historic building. I'm not going to go and order what's on the agenda, and there's actually one typo that I missed. Unclaimed funds? I have a check that I received from the state comptroller, Denapoli. I went to a workshop on, you know, funding education, and one of the more humorous but serious things that the comptroller did was talk about unclaimed funds. And he, not knowing he was going to do this, he called out, "Is anybody from Hyde Park here?" And he gave me this check for $3,100. So $3,179.68 on the board agenda, it says 41, but it is 31. And my proposal is to... Sorry. To allocate that money to FDR so that Barb can put some of the co-curricular activities that have been gone back in place and just let her have the discretion to use that money for co-curricular. And I just wanted to touch for a minute on opening of schools. School is... begins for staff next Tuesday, September 3rd. Our students will arrive on September 4th. They will have the fifth off for the Jewish holiday, Rosh Hashanah, and then they'll come back in again on Friday. So opening day for staff is next Tuesday. We did conduct our building tour. We had two board members in attendance, Doug and Steve. And we visit each building to fulfill the requirement that all the buildings are inspected. And we go into the buildings and we just pretty much highlight what work had been done. And since, pretty much except for the ceiling tiles at North Park and, of course, the whole athletic facility, which we've taken some time to tour, we did a lot of boilerwork. So we literally went into every boiler room in all our schools, and it was excellent.
And the clock tower.
And the what?
And the clock tower.
And the clock tower.
Beautiful view up there.
Yeah, and the attic. So we are ready for the opening of school. The ribbon cutting at... for the athletic facility is at 5:00 on September 27th. We'll have more details to follow. We've been having planning meetings, and we'll also have a planning meeting with our facilities and the police department, just to make sure we work out all the logistics. We are expecting a big crowd to our first homecoming game. Please look on the website to see the progress of the field. And if you don't look at our website, you may go to Keep Hyde Park on Track Facebook page. They have an extraordinary amount of photos, and they are looking to recruit some volunteers for some of their activities. So if you are willing to volunteer on that day, September 27th, it's Friday evening, you can contact Margaret Katani or visit their Facebook page. With that, I'll do the summer presentation.
Can you get through, which way?
And I know we have a packed agenda, so this really isn't a presentation, it's just a summary. But it did come up in conversations last year that people really didn't... Were not aware of how much happens in a school district over the summer, and particularly, how much happens in Hyde Park that propels us forward in meeting all the academic needs of the students as well as their social and emotional needs. So I'm just going to very quickly just give you a synopsis, and I'm sure we've missed some things. But this is what happens in our school district in the summer. We had our school psychologists attended a school safety and crisis management training. We had a couple of teachers do a full-length workshop with the Hudson Valley Writing Project. Lisa Hecht and I also... you get to invite a guest for the day at the culminating activity. So Lisa and I spent a day at the Hudson Valley Writing Project, and that was an excellent experience. It was just so nice to roll up my sleeves and be with a roomful of teachers and get back to my English teacher habits of looking at writing. A lot of literacy training. Literacy is a huge initiative. I know we're going to be talking a lot about literacy this year. We also had therapeutic crisis intervention for schools. That had, I'd say, over 30 people in attendance. As you know, we're bringing back more of our out-of-district placements, and one of our commitments was to have training. We had all... most of our administrators, our building administrators, in attendance for the training. Our teaching assistants that will be in our behavior TA will be our... Who will be our behavior teaching assistants, as well as classroom teachers, special education teachers. So that was a, again, I think it was a four-day workshop? Four-day workshop that was packed, excellent presenter. AVID is the Advancement via Individual Determination. That's a program we're bringing into FDR this year. I attended that along with Aviva and five of our high school teachers who will implement the AVID program. We do, as we do every year, the mentor training. Mark Plusha is the administrator who runs that program. And that just took place the last three days. We actually got a picture of Doug welcoming all our new teachers on Facebook page. We had math curriculum writing in grades 6 through 12, a geometry institute. We had two of our building principals and a couple of their teachers involved in the Columbia Writing Project down in the city. We had our annual leadership institute that pretty much Cora organizes, and we just had an excellent two days. We had CSC coordinator training and a lot of training around, thanks to Jen Kaiser, who's with us today, around the Common Core training. Again, this is training to support all of the initiatives that are outlined in our plans. For students, we had 163 students attend our Summer Bridge Program. We run parallel but a longer session, our extended school year Summer Bridge Program, and there were 64 students in that program. Camp Invention is our latest pride. Last year, we had 50 students. This year, we had 96 students. And we also had volunteers from our own high school and from area colleges to help us run that camp. It's an incredible camp, and, you know, certainly, we encourage anybody when that camp is running, if they want to stop by and see what the kids are inventing, to please do so. We will be formally recognizing our high school student volunteers at a later board meeting. We run a summer regions prep program. We had 99 students. 25 of those students in attendance had IEPs. There's a county-wide summer scholars program. We have two students... typically, school districts have two to three students. We had two students. The Rotary Youth Leadership Academy, which is paid for by the Rotary. We had three students attend that. They definitely come back with great skills. That's... and then Boys State, we had two students. So again, this isn't really a presentation, but it was suggested that with so much going on, we need to let people know what goes on in the summer.
If you could, I think most of, or much of it, was grant-funded. This was not built to the community.
Absolutely, good point, Doug. I didn't even think of the money aspect of it, but yes. Summer Bridge, Extended School Year, Camp Invention, and Regions Prep are all federally funded. And the bottom three don't cost us anything. Much of the training, some of these do cost us. Much of the training, the mentor training, the math curriculum writing, the leadership institute has a nominal fee, the Common Core training, and I could go back another slide, but most of our training is done in-house. It's done by our directors, our administrators, in some cases, even some of our lead teachers. I don't know if we had any teachers run training this summer. But we do as much of it as possible with in-house people. It can't all be done. For those items that are not done by in-house funding, we again look to the federal funding, the federal grants that we have to... that has to, by law, be designated to professional development, and that's how we offset the costs.
Okay, now, one thing I would like to suggest that we, as a board, investigate, and that would be to provide breakfast and lunch meals through the summer, as I think is done in Poughkeepsie. As a community service, I mean, we have a 43% poverty level. And in my experience, some of those kids, when they come to school, that's the best meal they get all day.
Yeah.
And I would just like to know what it might cost to provide that.
We provide lunch to our extended school year students. Do we provide breakfast as well? Okay, so for our extended school year students, we provide breakfast and lunch, and we can get back to you with what it would cost for our other Summer Bridge students. And Summer Regions Prep, I know we provide water and...
Right, the students that are in the general ed portion of Summer Bridge and the Summer Regions Prep students are there half a day. So at this point, we haven't offered meals to either one of those. But we could certainly look at either breakfast or lunch and get a cost out for that.
Okay, I was referring to all, not just Summer Bridge students. I'm referring to all students in need.
Oh, 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 okay.
Oh, in other words, those that are eligible for free...
Those that are eligible for free.
Yes, we can definitely look at that.
And our districts do that.
Yeah.
Yep. Good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a big deal, but who knows? Maybe it can be done with... within our budget, so... All right, so next, we have Cora on letter C data update.
While Cora is looking, can I make another suggestion about reports?
Okay.
Why don't we... we do this at work with... when we have big meetings, like, you know, you know, you have presentations. It probably takes about two seconds to do, but everybody submits their presentation. They're all PowerPoints. You put them all together, and then you have an interspersing page in between that tells you when you're done. And then that way, nobody has to fumble around looking for their presentation. You just keep rolling along. Just, it's one giant presentation, but everyone's got their own slides in it.
Reasonable.
Yeah, I think it just, it moves things along.
Okay.
You're worried about giving a presentation, the last thing you're worried, want to think about is trying to find it and get it up on the screen.
Thank you, Kevin. Excellent idea.
Okay, the clock's starting.
Okay, go. So, thanks Doug. Tonight, I'm offering an update of our literacy data. And as you can imagine, with the recent discussion about scores, there's a lot to be said, but I will be concise. Several months ago, I believe it was in January or February, I shared some of the information with you about some of the assessments that we do administer to our students. And included in those are two that are not required by state regulation. They are things that, as a district, we adopted, and they are things that have tremendous research bases behind them. So 30 years of research, enormous populations of students whose data is included, and really grounded in best practice. So one of those is the Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment, and that's an assessment that we give to students three times a year, kindergarten through 5th grade. It's an individualized assessment, so it's a teacher sitting down with a student, interacting with them one-to-one, and gaining insights into the student's skills and comprehension relative to literacy. It does provide both instructional and independent levels. And by that, I mean, a student's independent reading level is one that allows them to take a text, read it independently, comprehend the text, be able to talk about it and interact with it. The instructional level is that level of material that would be used in a guided reading lesson. So a student has not mastered those skills, they're working on skills within an appropriate text. Fanta's and Pennell measures both fluency and comprehension, so how quickly does a student read and how well do they comprehend what they've read? And then we use that information to inform our guided reading instruction as well as providing information for our teachers that are supporting students who receive AIS or Academic Intervention Services. Another district-wide assessment that, again, is not required, but one that we adopted for the reason I've mentioned, is what we refer to as DIBELS. It is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. That, too, is an assessment that's administered on a one-to-one basis with a student and a teacher. Again, administered three times a year. Because it's an assessment of early literacy skills, it's administered at K2. Provides a lot of data on very specific skills, and again, informs our instruction and informs our teachers who are providing AIS. This year, we added MAPS, which is the Measures of Academic Progress. In the 2011-12 year, it was piloted at the 9th grade level. This year, it was administered to all students in grades 3 through 10, twice a year. And that data is also around both literacy and math, I should say. And unlike the state test, for example, provides us data on growth within a single school year. I should say, Fanta's and Pennell and DIBELS also do that. So we administer more than once in a year. We're able to provide teachers and parents and students, hopefully, with information on their growth. The MAPS assessment is adaptive in nature, which means that as a student responds to a single item, they are presented with the next item. So the better a student performs, the more challenging the items are. When a student struggles, they're presented with a less difficult item. State assessments, you know well. They are presented in grades 3 through 8, and right now, we're focusing just on the literacy piece. Administered in the spring. This was the first year that the assessment was aligned to the Common Core. And Commissioner King has referred to the data on those tests as new baseline. It's a starting over point, which means that a comparison of this year's data to last is in many respects useless. I will share that comparison with you, but it's not something that we can use to really measure progress or measure teacher performance. And as you know, scores across the entire state fell significantly with those changes. So this is a summary of the change in the Fanta's and Pennell performance of our students in grades 3, 4, and 5 from the beginning of last school year, so fall 2012, to the spring of this last school year. And when I reported this several months ago, our beginning data was that 60% of our 3rd graders, 49% of our 4th graders, and 48% of our 5th graders were at the benchmark that was identified for the purposes of this assessment. At the end of the year, you can see that we had some growth. 69.5% at 3rd grade, 65% at 4th, and 67% at 5th grade. So again, this is a measure of performance within a single school year as opposed to one year to the next, as we do with the state assessments. DIBELS, again, we did beginning and end of year. There's also a mid-year measure, but for this purpose, I thought most effective would be beginning to end. Here, too, we had some improvement in our kindergarten and 1st grade performance. 2nd grade, statistically, we would say, pretty insignificant. We did not see the improvement that we saw in kindergarten and 1st grade. And one of the things I would say in terms of the difference in that data between K1 and 2 is that we often talk about students leaving 2nd grade and beginning 3rd grade with a beginning increase or emphasis on students moving a little bit away from some of the basic reading skills to really being able to read for comprehension and reading for meaning. And the challenge or the growth expected in 2nd grade in preparation for 3rd... And the challenge, or the growth expected in second grade in preparation for third, is significant. That being said, we still want all of those numbers to be much higher, and we are continuing to work on that. There is some correlation, I should say, with the Fanta's and Pennell to the Common Core. And Fanta's and Pennell speaks about it in terms of the Common Core really being that very large umbrella of standards, and that the Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment really gets down to very specific skills. So as we start looking at trying to do any kind of comparison, this is the first year that we and our principals can look at DIBELS data, Fanta's and Pennell, the MAPS data, and the state assessments, and begin to look for whether or not there are some patterns. And I think we're most comfortable, at least initially, looking at MAPS, Fanta's and Pennell, and eventually, the Common Core assessments. So that piece of it is something that we're still learning about, but I think is pretty important. Keeping in mind that this was the first year of administration of the MAPS assessment at the elementary level, you can see that we did, again, beginning and end of school year, third grade had an increase from fifty-three to sixty-one percent at benchmark, and then both fourth and fifth had a bit of a drop. I can't explain that drop yet, because we're still learning about that assessment and the kinds of skills that are embedded in it, but it's certainly something that we will take a look at as we administer next year. We are staying with MAPS assessments next year, and in fact, bringing that to our primary level students as well. So here's the slide that I really hate to share, but you've seen this information, and this is the detail. Again, I want to be very clear that fifty-two percent of third graders in 2012 compared to twenty-nine percent of third graders achieving benchmark in 2013 is not an apples-to-apples assessment, or a comparison. But you can see that we had reason to be concerned about our performance prior to the new assessments, and we have reason to be very concerned about the performance in the first year of Common Core. Again, what we're telling teachers is what the commissioner is telling us, that this right-hand column of results is a new baseline, and we have a lot of work to do around implementing the Common Core. So we're gathering all of this data around literacy, and trying to improve our use of it for very practical reasons, it makes sense to teachers and to students and to families. So we do have data teams that meet routinely now to look at student data and revise plans so that students are getting instruction that's connected to that data. Our AIS plans are created and revised based on regular progress monitoring. At the elementary level, students are reviewed every four to six weeks, and we are trying to improve the ways in which we share performance data with parents. For example, with the MAPS data, parents received, with their students' report card, a summary of the MAPS data that showed both the beginning and end-of-year performance, with some explanation from the company that creates those assessments, and an encouragement for parents that have questions to come and talk with us about that. Implementation of the Common Core is going to be the single most important thing that we do in terms of improving student performance. That's what the assessments are based on, and we need to really increase our efforts. And we've been talking among our administrative team, and we'll begin that conversation again on Tuesday with our staff, that implementation of the Common Core is not optional, it's not something that we can kind of wait to see pass by. We need to really take this very seriously. So the state has begun to provide instructional modules for teachers that are, you know, in layman's terms, units of study, that teachers will be asked to use, required to use, in some cases. Some of the modules are still in development, but we will continue to provide training on the six shifts that are associated with the literacy standards. I think you've heard before, reference to increased attention to nonfiction text, increased attention to writing and higher-level thinking skills. And as you know, the assessments are connected to teacher evaluation, which means that teachers' implementation of Common Core is also connected to the teacher evaluation process. This is review for you. The new APPR, which is the Annual Professional Performance Review, does require that twenty percent of a teacher's score be based on state tests, or an approved alternate where no state test exists. Twenty percent of that is based on a local measure, which we negotiate, and the other sixty comes from observations. The final thing that we talked about really wanting to reinforce and invite you to learn more about is the fact that our literacy assessments and the literacy programs we have in place are really grounded in research. These aren't things that we made up on our own, they're things that are used all over the country, and so these are the resources that you're welcome and encouraged to take a look at in terms of understanding further what's embedded in those assessments, and what the research is around their use. So I think I was over ten, but I don't think I was more than twenty. How'd I do?
Well, everybody gets a mulligan for tonight.
Excellent.
Because I didn't say anything beforehand.
All right, good.
But, and, you know, I guess I could have timed you, but I didn't.
Oh, I thought you were. All right, good.
But thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Any questions?
So, the majority of the tests that you covered tonight were diagnostic in nature, meaning that they are intended for the teaching staff and administration to understand the needs of the kids and adjust accordingly.
Particularly, the Fanta's and Pennell and DIBELS, yes.
So MAPS isn't a diagnostic test in that same sense?
It does provide information, and it does provide suggestions, and because it's new for us, we're still grasping just how much we can use it for diagnostic purposes with individual students. It is in the sense that it will identify a number of skill areas, provide feedback, provide next steps. I think it's really, and maybe I'm more, maybe it's more appropriate to say, that our comfort level with the diagnostic nature of the first two is greater, and we're learning about the diagnostic possibilities with MAPS.
Okay. I guess the question here that I'm trying to reach is, which of these tests are we administering because we see the advantage in doing so, rather than because we are required to do so?
Oh, thank you, good question. Neither Fanta's and Pennell, actually, none, are required in and of themselves. So for example, the state tests are obvious, they're required. Regulation for the purposes of teacher evaluation require that we use a test, so we must use something from an approved list for the purpose of teacher evaluation. So the reason that we have adopted MAPS is because it is on the list of approved assessments that can be used for teacher accountability. So as we proceed this year for the first time, there will be a connection between the results of MAPS and teacher performance. So while MAPS itself is not required, the use of a standardized test from a list provided by state ed is.
Yeah, and I want to add, too, that we were looking at MAPS long before all these new state assessments, so.
Yes, initially, and we're going back probably five years, we started talking about MAPS because of its research base and because our understanding of the potential use of it, and then coincidentally, it is on the list of approved tests.
And recently, I'll just add that, we looked at all the assessments we were giving and realized we can't possibly continue to give all of these, so the DIBELS will not be used for all K-2 students this year. We're still exploring, you know, maybe some possible use, but that is the test that at grade two, we are eliminating because we knew we needed to reduce the amount of time we're testing students.
That's ultimately where I was going, was, I'm trying to understand how much of the school, the classroom time, is used in testing.
Right.
Because in addition to the four tests that you mentioned tonight, there's also Regents, and of course, there's the standard testing as a natural part of the learning environment.
Sure.
Are SLOs covered by any of these tests as well?
Yes. And SLO, for those of you that are unfamiliar, is Student Learning Objectives, and that's a part of the teacher evaluation system. So, let me restate, at elementary, we have the assessments I just mentioned. The only one that I mentioned that is also applied at the secondary level is MAPS. So Fanta's and Pennell, DIBELS are elementary-only. For Student Learning Objectives, we are required to use a state test where there is one. So if I'm a high school global studies teacher, my student learning objective is the Global Regents Exam. We don't have to create or adopt another test. If I'm a physical education teacher, there is no state test, so there must be one that's either adopted or created by the district. And as much as possible, Steve, you mentioned, there are those tests that are just part of the regular learning or instructional environment. That's really how we view things like Fanta's and Pennell. And the reason is that that happens during guided reading lessons. Teachers are taking running records, which is a very informal process. As I'm reading, you as the teacher are keeping track of my errors and my corrections and things like that. So that's part of that learning environment that you mentioned. That's how we want our teachers to view the Fanta's and Pennell, and that's how we wanted teachers to view the DIBELS. Where it becomes very complex and challenging is that, within the teacher accountability system, I can no longer assess my own students and score them. So then, something like a Fanta's and Pennell would become something very different. I, as a student, would now have to be assessed by Perry, who's a teacher that I don't interact with every day. My performance undoubtedly is going to be influenced by that change. And it also creates the logistical nightmare of a principal making sure that all of my students can be scored by the three of you and all of your students.
Right, and, but that's not on the list anyway, so it wasn't even...
Understood. But the idea of whatever it is we're using being used in the way it was developed and being part of that normal environment is something that we strive for.
The other question I had was about the DIBELS and MAPS specifically. Over time, is it the same level of difficulty that's administered every time the test is given? Or as the school year progresses, is it also progressive so that it expects progress?
B.
Okay.
Yeah, it expects progress over time.
So to go back to some of the slides you were showing, there was a case where, for the DIBELS snapshot you showed us, kindergarten...
It's a decline.
At the beginning of the year was fifty-one percent, at the end of the year, it was fifty-nine percent. So that means that total growth wasn't nine percent, it meant that nine percent of the, pardon me, eight percent. So that means that instead of fifty-one percent meeting the expectations of DIBELS, at the end of the year, fifty-nine percent were meeting the expectations, and those expectations advance along with the classroom learning.
Correct.
Anybody else? Any other questions? I have one comment. Since MAPS is adaptive, it would seem like small differences could be as a result of, first time they took the test, they took a guess, got it right, got into the next level, they happened to know what the next question was, then it went on. And the second time, they took the test, the same level of question, well, it's something that they didn't know, that they got right the first time. And so a small difference doesn't seem like much of a difference. The other thing, I'd like to say something about Common Core, because it keeps coming up. The Common Core is about outcomes, not about curriculum. And it's not about how you teach, even not so much what you teach, other than the fact that you expect that your students to be able to have the outcomes that are listed for your particular grade level. So, just for people out, parents out in the community, it's not a curriculum. I just want everybody to know that, it's not a curriculum. It's outcomes. It's what they should be able to understand and know at the end of a particular year. That's, okay. So moving on, if no other questions? We have a presentation on HBE... Oh, French, sorry. I'm one ahead. Thank you for walking across, so I know I'm screwing up here. So, we have the French IV and French V textbook proposal.
Correct, and Spanish.
Kevin, can you pass the picture down this way?
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to figure out how to do it without people talking.
So I'm going to start. My name is Jen Kreiser-Aimy, I'm the Director of Humanities. That means English, reading, writing, languages other than English, social studies. And so in that job description, lot falls. I'll start by saying, I'll start by asking for an apology, or asking for forgiveness. I'm presenting the French IV and the Spanish V AP textbooks for both first and second consideration tonight. I know typically, we don't do that, and typically, we don't do a textbook presentation without having the books here, so that I can pass them around. However, school begins on Tuesday, Wednesday, and our teachers have been spending summer planning with these books, and I don't have a physical copy to show you, so I will show you the cover of the French IV, and then we can go into the Spanish V AP. So you're probably wondering, why don't we have it, and why are we doing this now? You may or may not know, but our French IV and our Spanish IV language courses offer students opportunity to get credit through universities. Spanish IV, you get credit from DCC for Level 1 language. French, you get credit through SUNY Albany. In order for us to get credit through SUNY Albany, our teachers have to provide and be, provide syllabi that are then approved, provide a curriculum vitae for themselves, and be approved, and then submit their unit assessments and their teaching, basically their teaching binder, if you will, and that needs to be approved. The first email exchange that Gina Colenti and I had about this textbook adoption, I went back and looked, was in February of this year. However, we were waiting to hear back from SUNY Albany about whether we were actually going to be approved. You may or may not know, universities are giving high schools less and less flexibility to offer college credit to students because it's at low or reduced cost to the university. So we were waiting, and finally, in June, Gina was like, they approved my syllabus and my, you know, they approved all my stuff, I revised it, I revised my assessments, they approved it. But at that point, you guys were done meeting. So that's why we're here, at this point, asking for first and second consideration of the French IV textbook. The textbook is Imaginez, Le Français Sans Frontières. I guess if there's a book I can't pass around, it's good that it's a French one, because I don't know if any of you could read a French textbook or not. I know it's been a while since I've had, you know, college-level French. Basically, this is the book that SUNY Albany is approving us to use. So I'm asking for first and second consideration. The bottom line is, if we say no, we probably won't be able to offer students Level 1 college course credit through SUNY Albany. The second text for Spanish V AP, and I'll just pull this one up. This one has a better website. This is the... This is the... This is the Spanish V AP text. The Spanish V AP text is Abriendo Paso Temas y Lecturas. It is approved by the College Board. Our Spanish V AP teacher, Jen Morris, has participated in AP training, has revised her syllabus, and is in the process of being AP Board-approved. Now, in order to offer AP courses, we submit syllabus and teacher vitae again to the College Board, and then they get back to us with approval. What's nice about both of these LOT resources is that we're purchasing the digital curriculum that goes along with it. So, we are purchasing online supersite codes for the next seven years. A question that you may have, that I'll answer in advance, why aren't we buying it in a digital format instead of the supersite code? Because the digital format is two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. And then there are additional fees for purchasing the either Chromebooks and the apps to make them actually work on the Chromebooks. So it's actually more cost-effective right now for us to purchase the text at sixty-one ninety-seven, so the real paperback text. And then, they're throwing in the supersite code for seven years for free. But my take on it is, in seven years, we'll be in a better place with devices so that there won't be the additional cost of the device. Any questions?
First, I wanted to thank you for explaining why we're seeing this for first and second consideration tonight. You know, I like to see us prepared and advanced, so it's helpful to know that, you know, you were on the ball and just subject to someone else's demands.
Yeah.
The other thing of interest that you mentioned, I mean, I'm not an expert on French or Spanish textbooks. As I was telling my partner at the table here, it's all Greek to me.
Yeah.
I know. Could have avoided it, but anyway. What is interesting to me is it sounds like the textbook industry, or at least this company, is adopting a business model where they're making it more expensive to gain the digital media instead of less expensive. Do you have any insight into that particular problem?
My hunch, I don't have any insight, but my hunch is it's around copyright. What these texts offer in terms of LOT, the digital media are videos and language pieces because changes in the AP exam have really required students to do more viewing of like an advertisement in Spanish. And then the assessment requires them to write a, you know, convince their friend to buy the VCR that was just advertised in Spanish. That's just a made-up example, but it's a different type of thinking. And I think that in terms of the digital media piece, the copyright isn't forever. You know, like you buy an advertisement, but it doesn't, you're paying royalties on that to whomever created that advertisement, blah, blah, blah. So in terms of expense, that would be my hunch. I don't know if it's correct or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I just have a comment, since I have a daughter in college. Why does the college textbooks cost twice as much as the textbooks that we normally buy?
It's a racket.
It is a racket. And they change, and the other...
And the editions change every year.
Yeah, well, that's the...
Flop chapters around.
The French edition, this is the second edition of French. I'm really glad I didn't have this done in June because the publisher stopped making the first edition, which was the first piece of paper that I made. So I went back to check it. We had to change it to second edition because it's a racket. And by the way, it went up eight dollars. It went up eight bucks. So that's how they do make money.
Yeah, I think just as a general add-on to that and to Steve's point, just don't expect digital textbooks, because we are going to arrive there. Not tomorrow, but probably within a few short years. Don't expect them to be any cheaper, because you're really not paying for paper and bindings and stuff like that. You're paying for the content, the people that develop the content, and the editing of that content. You're really not paying for the physical book itself. So, you know, it'll be a great thing. It'll make life probably a lot easier, but don't expect it to be cheaper.
Yeah, I don't expect it to be cheaper because the idea has always been that you're buying the intellectual property.
Right.
However, I would expect it to be...
A few dollars cheaper.
A few dollars cheaper, because you don't have to ship the thing. You don't have to produce the thing. You don't have to kill trees to do it.
Right.
It's just a way of picking up the profit that would have been made by the publishing companies to print them. That money, we want to keep the national economy going by the same amount of money being invested in it. So we'll pick up their share and soak it into our budgets.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we can move on.
Thanks, Jen.
With our multi-talented Wayne Kurlander, who is...
Oh, thanks, Gary.
The cameraman and the presenter.
Hey, Mike, feel free to see if he got that angle right once he gets up there. Put your right to work, right? Quick.
Timer's going here. All right, so I'd like to present tonight the cost comparison from the closure of the Hyde Park Elementary School. And this is an analysis based on actual expenses from eleven twelve to twelve thirteen. Due to the continued declining enrollment in Hyde Park Central School District and the depressed economic climate, we closed the school, Hyde Park Elementary, in July of two thousand and twelve. And the goal of this presentation, like I mentioned, is to outline the savings that were recognized by the district as a result. So there's several categories of expenses that were recognized. The first category that we'll review is academic personnel. Second category is the non-academic personnel. And you'll see on the slides to follow what that's made up of. Building upkeep and final utilities. So on the academic personnel side, the following academic positions were reduced in the twelve thirteen budget. One building principal.
And Wayne, you can just do bottom line, I think, yeah.
Okay.
People can look up the presentation.
Sure. So teachers, librarian, speech, IAS teachers, and special ed teachers. And the total academic personnel savings was eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Eight-hundred-and-twenty-five forty-nine. The non-academic personnel, as you see, things like nurses, custodians, food service, custodial coverage, and the total for that was two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand thirty-five dollars. All salary figures include employee benefits, by the way, for everything that I'm putting up here. And also for the last piece, we did not have any building use at Hyde Park Elementary, so it's a revenue, not an expense. So that has to be counted in as well. Building upkeep and maintenance, there was no savings recognized here as we were working on repurposing the building, and we wanted to keep the grounds nice and updated. Certainly, also have a full department that's moved over there. We wanted to maintain the fun force, because it's a community place. A lot of people enjoy that and use that. Plowing certainly had to happen on a regular basis, and general maintenance around the building as things needed to happen in almost every capacity. And then utilities. The electric, you'll see that there was ten thousand dollars and change that was saved. Interesting thing happened with oil. Oil from eleven twelve to twelve thirteen from our supplier went up thirty-four cents a gallon on an estimated overall basis, if you take the full numbers. So, there was not as much savings in oil as we had expected. And we also used the building for certain purposes as well. Propane, you'll see, we say it's eleven fifty. Phone and internet was maintained, so there's no savings there. The water and sewer was one thousand four fifty-nine in savings. And we got a new water tax, unfortunately, which was unexpected, so there was an increase there. And the total saved utilities was twenty-two thousand twenty-five dollars. So as an overall, if you look at it summatively, you'll see the academic personnel is eight twenty-five. Non-academic personnel is two fifty-eight. And again, those numbers include all employee benefits and payroll taxes. Utilities was twenty-two thousand dollars, getting us at one million one hundred and five thousand dollars one hundred and nine. We started off with one point two, and we got pretty close. So, there was some unexpected things that did happen that we were, you know, didn't have much control of, like the oil. We thought we would have much more savings there, but did not. So with that being said, I'll open up for questions.
Any questions?
Wayne, there's going to be savings, obviously, year after year. Any projection, I mean, how are you tracking that going forward to see that we don't have the creep? You know, sometimes you can have a creep where expenses can come along and...
One of my following presentations is going to be on the leases that we've established. We have a lot of interest, and they're starting to happen. So I will be talking about that. And what we're trying to do is maintain those expenses by taking in revenue. So, in future years, you're going to see a revenue side to this as well. In twelve thirteen, we didn't have any revenue stream. But in thirteen fourteen, we're going to have a revenue stream and hopefully many more.
Any other interesting thing, Perry, was we did convert to gas. So it'll be really interesting to track those heating costs next year as well.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? No, then we'll move on to Wayne's next presentation.
You guys are going to be sickening by the end of the night. All right, so on tonight's agenda, we're setting the tax levy for Hyde Park Central School District. So I wanted to, every year, we put together a presentation to talk about some of the things that might have happened and to help the community members, board members, and everybody out there understand, you know, why things are the way they are. Each year, it gets a little bit more interesting. So, one good thing this year, Hyde Park Central School District invested in some updated tax software. Wanted to make the job to those folks that do the tax levy collections a little bit easier. And the district does collect for the town of Clinton, Ryanbeck, and Pleasant Valley, right here in central office. And Poughkeepsie collects for itself, and Hyde Park collects for itself as well. But anyway, for those three towns that we do collect for, there's some new features. Taxpayers can now go online and view their bill. And with their banking information, they could pay their bill online. So if anybody doesn't want to send a check, or, you know, it's just a nice added thing that we've talked about for several years, and it was an option, so let's go with it. And then, the other thing is taxpayers will be able to go into their individual tax information online. So if somebody wants to see their actual tax bill, having problems, didn't get it, they can do that, and certainly can call us up for help on that. It's pretty self-explanatory to do it. And then the district, we hope to have a link very shortly on our main page to this website. So just go to HydeParkHPCSD.org, and there'll be a link on the front page. And like I said, the town of Poughkeepsie and Hyde Park collect taxes for their towns, and they use a different software, so unfortunately, those towns don't have the same access. So the process of setting the tax levy, this doesn't change. We, certainly the expenditure budget happens and is approved in May. At that point in time, we anticipate what we think the portion of tax levy is going to be. And anticipated revenues are estimated in that May time as well. And we have our portion of the tax levy. Equalization rates are set in August. Assessed values come in from town in and around the end of August. And tax rates and warrants are calculated by the towns that we present tonight. You'll see during, at budget time, when we were doing our estimations, we came very close to where we needed to be. In twelve thirteen, we were fifty-four million two hundred and six thousand dollars. And in thirteen fourteen, you'll see that number, and the difference is one million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and are two-point-seven-three percent. So, the next slide will explain that. A tax levy increase and a tax rate increase are two distinctly different things. And that's important for the community to understand that. When we present our budget, the tax levy increase is the increase in the tax levy from one year to the next and divided by the base. Your tax rate increase, which we set tonight, is the individual rate that comes on your bill. One works in hand with the other. And tax rates do vary by town and individual parcel, depending on what's going on, you know, with your property. And each tax bill, therefore, is unique. It's not a blanket overall for everybody. The following components make up the tax calc. I mentioned the district's total levy that's figured. And that becomes the actual total levy dollar amount that we need to get through the year. The assessed value, like I said, this is the dollar value. The individual towns' place on properties, that changes from year to year. So it's a revolving thing, so we get that annually. And again, it's unique to each property. Equalization rates are things that, it's a rate that the state of New York puts together to try to equalize the assessed values. If it hasn't been reassessed in quite a while, then they place an equalization rate on top of that to make it equal and good for all five towns. All right, some tax rate changes. As you'll see here, and I'll explain why this is happening. If anybody tuned in last week, we had a special Board of Education meeting on Tuesday to talk about this. And what happened is Hyde Park had a little change in its equalization rate. And you'll see that in the following slides. But right now, you'll see the tax rate changes for all five of our towns. It's certainly not two-point-seven-three percent, and I'm going to explain why. The Clinton, Pleasant Valley, Poughkeepsie, and Ryanbeck will experience a little bit higher than we expected due to the changes in Hyde Park, who will be experiencing a decrease for the thirteen-fourteen school year. The tax levy is uneven for thirteen-fourteen for the following reasons. The assessed value in Hyde Park went up by six million dollars, and the twelve-thirteen equalization rate for Hyde Park rose from fifty-four to fifty-six percent. That was two years ago, or last year when we set. And it increased again in thirteen-fourteen by, from fifty-six to sixty-two percent. And that's a very, very large jump. And the reason being, you'll see again in a future slide, that Hyde Park represents more than fifty percent of our tax levy. So a very small move on the assessed values or equalization rate in combination with one another results in a change in the tax structure for the other towns. So this caused the full market value to decline in Hyde Park by one hundred and fifty-one million six hundred and eight thousand dollars. And it also reduced Hyde Park's share of the tax levy. And this is where, this is the clincher. It's taking a piece of what they normally were responsible for and passing it on to the other folks. So as a result of the balance between one and three, it actually results in a true nine percent decrease in total market value for the town of Hyde Park. So scenario for Hyde Park, you'll see in twelve thirteen, the assessed value was at nine thirty-three. And then in nine thirty-nine, so there's an actual increase in assessed values, but that equalization rate jumped so much because of the decline in market value, you can see that the share on that last column, percentage of the tax levy, went from sixty-two-point-eight percent to sixty-one-point-one-six. And that's really where the, you know, where this all stems from. So some facts, like I mentioned, the town of Hyde Park makes up fifty-one percent of the thirteen-fourteen tax levy. And as I mentioned, a small shift is really what happened. If that equalization rate hadn't changed, if market values hadn't been going down, you would see that we were at two-point-seven-three across the board, within a very, very small margin. We were right on the dollars there with the numbers if it had stayed the same. So I just put that slide on there as a reference to see, you know, if we didn't have that happen, we would have been okay. But this is the true reality of what did happen. So assessed values, to understand why there may have been varying tax rates, assessed values need to be brought up to a full market value. When a full reassessment is completed by the town of Hyde Park, it should result in less anomalies in tax rates, we would hope. Again, each year, I have, I'm surprised at how it works out. But it should result in less anomalies in the tax rates amongst the five towns. We did sit down with the town of Hyde Park and, you know, to discuss it and had an open conversation with several board members and their town supervisor to talk about that. They're aware, and then, you know, they're in agreement that this needs to get done, but it's very, very expensive to do. So they are looking at options, but, you know, right now, they are not doing it. Market value, it's important to understand how we derive that. Basically, we take our total assessed values and divide it by the EQ rate, and that gives us our full market value. And this is all part of that calculation that you have in your packet tonight. So here's the equalization rates that are compared. In Clinton, it actually went up. And what does that mean? And in the further slide, basically, they're, I'm going to get this wrong. Their, the market value dropped, the town value of Clinton, and their assessed values are actually over their market value. So they have a reverse situation, if you're following that. And then Hyde Park, you know, like I said, that's the one. And then the other three towns stayed the same at a hundred percent. So they've all been reassessed and maintained a hundred percent market value. Important notes, again, I highlight Clinton and Hyde Park. The equalization rates are set by the New York State, and the school district has absolutely no control over that decision. So the share of tax levy by town, as you can see, Clinton went up. The Hyde Park went down, and Pleasant Valley, Poughkeepsie, and Ryanbeck. So those are just the figures of the increase in the share of the tax levy. So that's how it was, that one-point-six-four, if you do the math, is divided across the other ones. So the comparison, excuse me, of taxable assessed values. You'll see that in Clinton. You see the assessed values for twelve thirteen to thirteen fourteen, and the change. As I mentioned, Hyde Park actually went up, but because of the equalization rate, it actually still had that phenomenon there. Pleasant Valley went down by three million and changed. Poughkeepsie, eighteen and a half, and Ryanbeck went down twenty thousand five ninety... Pleasant Valley went down by three million and changed, Poughkeepsie eighteen and a half, and Ryanbeck went down twenty-thousand-five-ninety-one. So assessed values are, on the overall, going down except for Hyde Park, which, you know, was adversely affected by the EQ rate. So I have a little note on the bottom there. Even though assessed values are technically up in Hyde Park, this is important to understand. By six million, fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-six, they actually are down when the EQ rate is applied. There's an overall decrease in assessed values by that, the one-million, one-hundred-and-fifty-one million, eight-fifty-two, or nine percent as presented in this, in the earlier slide. So an important note on assessed values, most assessed values in our area continue to decrease. Town of Poughkeepsie's decreased the most, and the town of Hyde Park's assessed values increased. But because of the change in equalization rate, as discussed earlier, it still results negatively on the other towns. Fair market value, people ask, you know, what houses are worth? That the fact is, the value of homes in our areas have continued to decline overall. However, the rate at which these values decrease or increase, as, you know, displayed this evening, is disproportionate between the towns. And again, Hyde Park's market value shrank more so than all others, shifting the tax levy burden onto the other districts. So moving along a little bit on STAR this year. You may remember, over the last two years, New York State has capped it by two percent. So we may see another levy come, you know, maybe the September meeting, depending on what I get back in from the Office of Real Property Services. And so just be prepared for that. And they give us our adjusted STAR after we set the tax levy. So that's just, we can't help. Here's the basic STAR amounts for our five towns. You can read through those. And they all hover in between sixteen-hundred and nineteen-hundred dollars for folks. So, you know, if you don't have STAR, certainly if you're a senior citizen and you have to do it annually, it's really important that you get it done. Just do March first, get that in. You know, if you're new here to the area, it's a savings to your assessed values and certainly to your pocketbook. So here's a new thing with STAR. Because they wanna get a better handle on things, STAR is requiring you to do a one-time STAR registration program. So I promised that I would present this. And basically, what it is, is new legislation requiring everybody to sign up. Homeowners will not have to register in order to receive the thirteen STAR exemptions. But if you wanna get next year's, make sure you get in there before, I think it's December thirty-first. And it's part of a new initiative to protect New Yorkers against the cost of inappropriate or fraudulent STAR exemptions. As you know, you can only do it on one property. Senior citizens receive the enhanced STAR exemption and have no impact by this registration. They have to do it annually anyway. So that's, that does not apply to senior citizens at all. But it's new for basic STAR folks. Information will be mailed, and I just confirmed just a couple days ago that residents will be receiving this in the mail by the middle of September. So look for that, you know, in the middle of September. If you don't get it, certainly give the STAR unit of the state a call, or call us, and we'll help you out. But you'll have till December thirty-first to fill that out for your fourteen STAR. The town of Hyde Park, last year, the town of Hyde Park charged taxpayers an additional fee. This continues. This is on the bottom of your tax bill. It's not a Hyde Park tax. It is the cost for paying your taxes in the town of Hyde Park. And it's point-zero-zero-four percent of your individual tax bill. And that's paid to Hyde Park as a processing fee. We don't see that money. And that's all, questions? I probably went over and I apologize, but...
Are there any questions?
I just, I'm sorry. Wayne, what, am I understanding correct? When the assessed values change from year to year, the two big driving forces are developments of property that hadn't been on the tax rolls the previous year?
That could be a very...
Like the stop-and-shop facility?
Yep.
And also the results of grievance stay, where people have gone and questioned their assessment values. And if they get dropped, that is gonna result in a negative to the assessed values. Now, what happens to properties that are abandoned?
The properties that are abandoned, you know, the tax bill still happens. So depending on whenever it settles, like, if somebody just totally abandons it and leaves it, it's still in their name. It's still gonna be owed to them. So they get a lien placed on them personally. So hopefully, in some time, they'll collect. Then it's all figured in when they do like a short sale or foreclosure. All those things are put into place, and it eventually gets paid. But for the school district, we're lucky. We get a hundred percent of our tax levying, irregardless. What happens to the county is a different story. They are the collection agents for an abandoned property. No matter what, we'll always get our taxes.
County, the county is the only authority that can seize property and sell it. So what happens is when you don't pay your school taxes, your property, land taxes in the town, or your fire tax, or whatever, that unpaid tax gets turned over to the county. The county then makes the entity whole, and then they can put the lien on and basically throw the thing up for sale. You know, so that's why, you know, it never hurts us if you don't pay the school tax bill. It will hurt yourself, and it will hurt the county, but they'll get their money. That's how it works.
All right, and the other thing, Wayne, you said the town charges a rate for collecting the tax bill?
That's correct.
Is there anyone who monitors the charge compared to the actual cost to say that that's what they're getting? Or that they're overcharging us?
No.
They just feel like doing it. It started last year.
I know they started last year, but my first question, if they started last year, fine, they pulled this number out of a hat.
Right.
As to what they do, I think it was capped at a max you could charge. They pulled some number out of the hat. But is there any way of, or anybody monitoring that what they got reimbursed for equals what they cost them?
What's an interesting point is there is a, there's a number of folks who don't pay their school taxes at the first due date, but they pay it by the second due date, and there's a penalty that's applied for that. That penalty, the town keeps, you know, it does not come over to the school district. The school district just gets their money, and they, the town, because it's the effort they have to put forward. And you'll find that last year, I think I ran the numbers when I looked at it when the town first started this, the amount of money, based on what's historically been paid late, the amount of money they collect in the late fee just about covers the operation of the office for the entire year. I mean, for all things that they do, not just the school tax. Yeah, so it's kinda interesting, yeah.
That can result in a cost, though, to us, that one, because we don't have the funds available at the right time. The county doesn't make good on that money.
Right, no.
Right away, so...
No, the county only makes good once it's turned over to the county.
Right, so we could wind up, we go out for these anticipation notes?
Yeah, but don't forget, we don't spend all our money all at once in the early part of the year. So this is all wrapped up by the late fall, and there's a whole bunch of money we haven't spent yet, so...
So it's not gonna result in us going out and getting...
Right.
It's not gonna result in us going out and getting a anticipatory note?
Right, other than it's not sitting in the bank earning interest. But other than that, it's not that it hurts us there.
It's a welcome check in April.
Yeah. Wayne, I just wanna make a comment. This is a very good presentation. I know it was very long, but really, for the folks who are watching on TV, this is gonna be posted on our website with the board agenda. I really encourage you, if you don't understand how the taxes are set and levied, you know, I really encourage you to take a look at this presentation. It's pretty self-explanatory when you read through, because it's exceedingly detailed, which I ordinarily don't encourage in PowerPoint presentation. But because this is being made available for the public, you really probably won't have too many questions about it after you read through it. But if you do, all of us, you know, Wayne, et cetera, would be certainly willing to answer them. But I think it's really well done as far as just laying out how it works and how equalization rates work and all that. And quite frankly, it just is, as a political or opinion commentary, I, you know, I know the town recognizes that they probably have to do something with the assessment rates. But when you look at the results here, there really isn't any big incentive for them to do it. Because the people that vote for them are the people that live in the town of Hyde Park. And we're all like, yay, taxes are going down, what's the problem? You know, and it's unfortunate for the people in the other communities, absolutely. But, I mean, I think that that's really the issue. If the tables were to be turned, you could, you'd probably see a rushed assessment. But I just don't think there's gonna be a big rush to do that here.
I wish they cared more about my health and safety, though.
Yeah.
Because I'm proving a tax warrant, it's gonna affect my son, it's in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going down, and his is going up, and he's gonna come after me.
I was asking for the difference.
Okay. Question on the STAR program?
Sure.
On the basic exemptions, I see all the towns have different numbers for exemptions, like Hyde Park's the lowest. How do they come up with those numbers?
I know it has to do with, has to go with, I don't quote me on this, but I think it has to do with the amount of income in an area, you know, with regards to, and assessed values. I've never really looked into exactly what's there, but I believe it's income-based.
I think it is, because we do have to answer the question.
Wayne, I think you're right, I think it's wealth-based.
Wealth-based, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, Wayne, you get to stay up there.
Yeah, and Wayne, on the Capitol, just choose one. Because one of the reasons, two reasons why we have a lot of presentations. One, we haven't really met all summer. And the other is there have been some standing presentations that, you know, we've been committed to giving. One is the Capitol projects update. So just choose one, and we can go through it very quickly. Because we still have a full agenda. But again, because the project is so big, let's constantly update.
Bottom line is, we are still on time and on schedule and in budget. So enough said, we're done, no. Here's some pictures, here's the field with the FDR the right way. You'll see it later on with the other way. Another, a little bit more dimmer one, a little tough to see, but you'll see the away bleachers. So you can really see this, this whole project's really coming together. It's paved, all we're waiting for is the rubberized track surface and, you know, fixing it up. And you'll see some aerial shots here of, you know, up from those bleachers, really quite a view up there. So it's gonna be great to watch those games. The pavement, this is the entrance, the future entrance, and we had that moved out a little bit, because it was, you know, a nice sore there in the front. Here's the security cameras up in the upper left. And again, in the upper right is another picture. Here's, this is what's actually made of, made up of in the turf. It's an interesting material, it's like rubber type, like rubber sand, basically. And it really, if you get a chance, you can get out there and walk across, it's really a neat feel on your feet.
No high heels.
Yeah, no high heels, that's right. But some people took their shoes off just to get the feel, it's really cool. Here's a really clear picture of the new home bleachers. I mean, just eventually, I think at the end of September, we're gonna do like a presentation of where it started and where it got to. So that should be probably the last presentation on the track that I do. But we have committed to giving you guys progress all the way, all along. This is the home, the away bleachers, other teams. And again, just some really good shots. And the excitement's really brewing, we're having a hard time keeping people out of our gates. So it is still closed until the twenty-seventh, but, you know, it is exciting. You can see here on the right and the left, the goalposts went up. And this is like, I'm over there, and they're putting the goalposts up and snapping pictures as we go. And a good thanks to Lori Benton for being so good about getting everything on Facebook for us. So it's on Facebook, it's on our website, and certainly at the board meetings. These are the development of the sitting areas, it's gonna be an exciting area for folks to convene during and after games. Here's the boring stuff now, is the boilers in the other schools. Nobody cares about those, but certainly they're a very, very important part of our project.
Some of us like that stuff.
I know, I know, I'm kidding.
Which school is that?
That FDR?
It's FDR.
Yeah.
And this is the ceilings at North Park, which came out fantastic. It really, really, all the hallways, it looks really good. And we, you know, ran into a little bit more asbestos than we thought, but it's taken care of and in budget and on time. And there's some interesting stuff going over at, going on at Havlin Middle School. With regards to pipes, as you might remember, from the middle of last year, we began presenting on the pipe issues that we have at Havlin, and it's been fixed, and it looks really good. That's the end of that show.
Thanks, Wayne.
One more?
We'll see if there's questions on the facility.
Any questions?
Yeah, it looks good, can't wait to see the field.
Are we gonna do the...
The lease is more an informational item. But he puts slides up.
Okay, real quickly, you know, we talked about the expenses, and we have people, a lot of interest in Hyde Park Elementary. And we have people starting to move in. So I just wanted to review really quickly with the board, so you have, you're fully understanding what's going on over there. When Hyde Park was closed, the district promised that the building would be utilized for community and educational purposes. And we're really trying hard to keep with that. Our plan to lease space is to educationally base programs and companies that serve our community and help people out. And has generated a lot of interest from many other agencies, from large to small, from a knitting group to Maris College. So you can imagine that we've entertained quite a few meetings, and a lot of people are waiting for their budget cycle and this and that. But, you know, the interest is definitely out there, and it's kind of interesting to see who's coming through the door. So we're currently leasing space at the town of Hyde Park Recreation. They had a grand opening a couple weeks ago, fantastic. They have a really nice space in the corner, and they're doing the aerobics in Marjan. And I know that Diane Cullen and Mrs. Davis over at the rec center are really thrilled to have that space. It's like a home for them, really good stuff, so... But our newest addition, that we just signed a lease for, is Bright Days Limited Liability Corporation. And what that is, is it offers a series of mini programs. And it's an opportunity for parents. There's a lot of parents that work out there and don't get those Christmas breaks off and, you know, Easter breaks off. And I know I'm one of those people, so I'll be hopefully sending my kids there. But for half-days and teacher training days where, you know, the parents are looking for an opportunity to bring their kids somewhere, because they're off and, well, we still have to work, so... But generally, Bright Days offers programs on the days that parents work and students are off from school. And the programs, I have to say, are really good. I did a little research into it and had a lot of conversation. But it's for grades K through eight, and it offers both full and half-day programs that focus on really educational things, cultural arts, technology, science, math, and literacy. So keeping in with, you know, with what we're trying to accomplish here in our school district, I thought it was a nice addition and certainly a nice thing for the community, so that's it.
Yes, I just wanted to add that they're basically renting two classrooms for forty days this school year, just forty days. And it is a local business owner, so she, and she will make a profit and will get a little revenue by renting out these two classroom spaces for just forty days.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question about just our approach in trying to rent. And I mean, and this is all great activity, but it's, I'd like to see something bigger, I'd like to see something more. And I just, you know, what are we doing to try to get out? I know that there was a tri-fold pamphlet made. And, I mean, there are people who make their living handling real estate and renting property. And I just wondered if, you know, are we thinking about, you know, putting it in the hands? Yeah, and just seeing if there's a better way to get this thing filled up and generate some revenue.
Right, and we did send out the tri-fold to all the educational agencies and did, got a lot of responses back. I think we can entertain that question. Do we actually wanna list the building with a Realtor, with a local Realtor? We've had a couple of Realtors approach us, but they weren't local. So it's been really interesting. We haven't pursued it very quickly. We certainly have a handful of local Realtors who are following this, who have been through the building, who are aware that it's available. But if it's time to see if any one of them formally wants to take it on as a listing, we could explore that. We certainly have one Realtor in the area who has been, you know, and I'm not advocating for any one person or agency, but we have had a Realtor who has been a member of our facility steering forum for many years. So she's intimately aware of everything. She was on the school closing advisory committee. So, but we can entertain listing it formally. Locally, our Realtors are very much aware of the building. Sue Serino, the Serino Realty, well, Brian Woolsey just moved, I forget where he was. Christine Jones, he was, right, Prudential, so...
There's just a difference between people knowing that it's available and coming to an agreement with someone who can, is gonna take it and market it and put the energy. You know, certainly, you know, if somebody walks into a Realtor's office and say, hey, you know, I wanna rent, you know, four classrooms somewhere, and they say, well, okay, I know where you can go. But on the other hand, if we're looking for somebody who's gonna actually take this thing and try to, you know, hit the pavement with it, and, you know, I think that's an agreement that we'd have to enter in with a Realtor. It's an exclusive, because they're gonna spend some money and effort to try to do it. But it could pay dividends for all of us. I think it, it seems like something we should probably entertain. Maybe, you know, go out for an RFP from, you know, advertise for an RFP from local Realtors and see who's willing to do what, what program they put together, and what their compensation would be for it.
Anybody else? I have one comment. On the flip side of that, we now have the senior citizens utilizing one room. And I'd like to suggest that we not charge them. That we use, especially now that we've gotten give-back funds from the health insurance, insurances. I think it would be a good gesture, and I'd like to have that discussion perhaps next meeting. Guess so.
I don't know what exactly all of the activities are, but I wonder if there's an opportunity to coordinate community member usage of the athletic facilities, which we've talked about for a long time, with activities in the senior citizens program in terms of their fitness programs.
Right. All right, well, that's something for another meeting, and I just wanted to give you a heads up on what I was thinking. And you can all, you know, shoot me emails later on and say, what are you thinking, Doug? But, yeah, now you will now move on.
Thanks, Wayne, great.
You get to sit down, Wayne. You get to sit down Wayne.
Thanks Mike, our backup cameraman tonight. Our backup for our backup.
Okay, we're actually.
We should put a shout out that we missed Steve Hughes tonight.
We're at public participation. I'd like to have a motion for public participation.
Second.
Second, any discussion? I'll just state that, you know, we would like you to keep it three minutes. We think your comments are valuable, we want to hear you. If you have to go over a little bit, that's okay. But not, you do it too often and I'm going to cut you off, all right? So that being said, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm in favor.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
Is no, any discussion? No, okay. We're in, motion passed, then. What would you say, all in favor? I don't know if I did.
Maybe that's why I was confused.
Wow, you kept raising your hand.
Lori Malison, Hyde Park, New York. Before you, I gave Deb a list of superintendents, teachers' unions, and school boards, all who have put up resolutions against high state testing. I'd like to know if this is something Hyde Park would consider about the HPE numbers? I'm very happy to hear that we saved so much money. I just was hoping for a little clarification with the numbers, Wayne. The two hundred and thirty-five thousand around for callbacks for leaves, I'm just curious how this is related to the closing? And the seventy-seven thousand dollars in federal funding for special ed, I'm wondering, could that have happened either way, whether the school was closed or not? And it makes me very happy to hear that there's a daycare going in there, it's good news for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Mr. Shaw? No? Okay, I have a motion to close public participation.
Second?
Second, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, we are now back in general session. Okay. Next item is a review of the board goals.
Mr. Heer. You're going to give us a chance to respond to it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just, you know, I just, the giants are on, come on, you know? I'm sorry. Where's Wayne?
Hey, come over here, so we can be close to the camera.
Okay. You're the one on the hot seat there.
Yep, so what those teachers represent, Lori, is those teachers that got put on a callback list because of the way we, you know, we have to lay somebody off, they get put on a, what's it?
Recall.
Recall list, and.
Seven years.
Leaves of absences happened, maternity leaves, all different types of things. So because those names were there, I just wanted to show that some of those folks did wind up making it back to the school district in different capacities. And then your second question with regards to special ed, it would have happened either way.
Okay, anybody else? And I apologize for rushing things along, but if you have any other question, I'm sure just call Wayne, he'll be, he'll be happy to. That's his job, he gets paid for that. Okay. Oh, you have a question?
Sorry.
Not a question, but a statement. The written material that Lori gave us is about a resolution that's being presented to school boards across the nation to oppose the mandatory standardized testing. And I think that it's worth considering, simply because I think that testing is, as we discussed earlier, taking up a lot of our time in our classrooms, not necessarily for the right reasons.
All right. I think since this is the first I've seen it, we should think about it and perhaps have a quick discussion at the next meeting.
I can actually supply a sample resolution in the next board packet, and I also want to remind that we passed several resolutions last year to make statements to influence our legislators, and several, a few of the ones that we put forward actually did affect change. This one won't affect immediate change, it's more making a statement, but I'll certainly provide with, provide you with a sample resolution.
Thank you.
As long as you've mentioned packets, I would like to see the information in the packets more concise also. Sometimes you're wading through lots of documents and you miss something that, because you have stuff that you already knew and maybe didn't need, didn't have in, especially in the journals, if you could keep them as short as possible so that, you know, not leaving out the important details, but that would be also a help. Okay.
I'd just comment on that, that we've got two new board members this year, and, you know, whereas you and I, or that some of the board members been on for a while, may be familiar with the information, they may not, and that's, you know, that will create a problem too.
Well, maybe we should ask them. Would you like too much information in your packets? Oh, okay.
The only comment I'll make though is, you know, having done it the old way and just getting on board doing it this way, this is much better that you just don't have those piles of paper weighed through. It's a lot easier to, you know, you know, you used to have to come back in here with piles after weeks at a time to get it shredded, because some of it contained confidential information, you're like, you know, just laying around the house, I like this a lot better. And you can go back and look at things easier, if something, you know, if you have a question about something that happened earlier in the year.
Yeah, you can actually find things.
It's really nice document, or system.
Okay.
Part of why she got that award.
Well deserved.
So, oh, I thought it was because Steve told a bunch of whoppers when he sent that in, but okay. So, we have, we're up to board goals, and I'd like to keep this as a discussion, not what our goals are going to be in this coming year, but whether or not we accomplish the goals that we set for last year. So if you, we'll go down the slide in order, academics, which states, "Through regular presentation from Strategic Planning Committee, review non-mandated academic programs instituted in the last three years which are still being utilized to ascertain effectiveness." So those of us that were on the board, I guess you guys get to sit over there and think, ruminate or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll hang back and listen.
Any comments on that? I have some, but I'll wait.
It doesn't feel like we reviewed all of the non-mandated academic programs.
That's where, that would be my assessment also. We did have one, I look back, you know, I'm trying to remember, how many times have we done, and we had our annual, yeah, PDF file of, you know, that Cora brings us and has all the data, but we didn't do it in a periodic manner, I didn't, I didn't think so.
Certainly not regular presentations.
Right, so, since I'm on the strategic planning committee, I think we got wrapped up in the common core and really, thinking back on it, I think we should have perhaps had a presentation on what it meant, and, but, so I would say it's a good goal, but I don't think we actually met it. All right. Next, the board operations, there were three. Leverage of board docs to reduce paper usage, reduce time required by district clerk to package prep, and improve public awareness. I think the word docs has been a rousing success, I don't know if anybody else is.
Oh, big thumbs up on that one.
Yeah. Start public meetings on time, ninety percent of the time. We started out good, and we had a lot of executive session material, and I think we came close, but I don't think we actually made ninety percent. What do you think? You were present then?
Yeah, by my guess, we were closer to sixty percent.
Really?
Sixty percent, yeah.
We're pretty much.
Depends on, you know, depends on how you define on time. And I hate to give a nebulous answer, but if you define on time as down to the minute, we very rarely started down to the minute on time. However, did we start a half an hour late? No. Did we start even fifteen minutes late? Very rarely, no. But five minutes late, it happened pretty frequently.
Yeah, that's the old Metro North on time.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they give you a couple of minutes, you know? And that's right for the latecomers, gives them a chance to get in before, you know?
So, you know, as, you know, I considered this one of my primary objectives, and I would not say that I was successful at it, but I think that in general, we were a lot more conscious about time.
We were, and I think.
Used it better.
It's something that should stay as a goal, but we can talk about that next, at the next meeting. Conduct and attend a Robert Trues of Order seminar, which we did, was very helpful. We found out some things that we should have done, and some things we did wrong, and some things that we didn't realize we could do. So I think it was a very useful meeting, so we, I think we met that one. So on the budget, create a budget to maintain as much program as possible given the budget cap. Any spending reduction should be distributed with equity. I think the budget was as good as it could be, and it certainly was distributed equitably, I believe. But I'd like to hear from everybody else.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's always a difficult time, and everybody's got their own opinion as to whether, you know, certain things should stay in the budget or not, but I think, you know, from where I'm sitting, I think we did a pretty decent job with that, I think then. And perhaps given the lack of uproar, maybe we did do okay with that.
Well, I would say, considering that other districts cut music, cut art, and cut a lot of extracurricular activities, the fact that we did not is, I think, proof that we maintained as much programs and other things as possible, and when we did cut, it was in an equitable manner, right? I, you know, we didn't just cut sports or cut JV football or whatever. So I think, I think we did pretty good in that one, and.
I think that comparing, comparing ourselves to other districts is fine, and I think you're right, but comparing ourselves against ourselves in primary, previous years, this was an excellent year. We didn't, to my knowledge, we barely touched any program.
That is correct. So how come you got the easy year?
Timing is everything.
The other one under budget was report cost containment effort or results as they became available. I thought of this one a long time, and I, I'll let everybody else say something first, and I, I'm.
I think on the positive side to this goal, the presentation today on the cost savings resulting from Hyde Park Elementary closures was as timely as you could get. I mean, we're one month beyond the closing of the budgets and the figures are in now, and we've got a presentation on where we were and how well we did, so that major containment is, that is probably the major cost containment we exercised last year. Several of the other ones involved the switchovers to gas instead of oil, and obviously those numbers are not going to be available the next year, but we need to make sure we don't let that presentation slip by.
Okay.
And obviously, we'd like to get them as soon as possible, but, and we should be, you know, dependent upon Wayne giving us a heads up on that as to when does it make sense, when have we got figures that would be providing useful information in those areas.
Okay, moving on to, so I guess in the terms that you stated, then we would, I wasn't exactly sure what cost containment efforts, whether that had to do with maintenance or facilities and operations type stuff, or academic stuff? I mean, there's a whole lot of, lot of things we could be containing in costs and still maintaining programs, and I didn't hear any of that, so.
Well, I would think, you know, in one of the areas, we continue to evaluate the extra offerings for our students and, you know, the extension courses and stuff like that, and maintain a balance, you know, and we've done a pretty good job over the last two years, I think, in balancing it to those, you know, making sure the classes are full to justify the course, and where courses can't be filled in one year, to carry it over and offer certain programs that have consistent requests, to offer it on an alternate year program and to guarantee access to that program for every student somewhere along the way so that they're not going to miss out on it. And those, you know, that's been a, you know, really tough ball to juggle, I think.
Yeah, I've been having, my problem was with reports as they become available, and should they have been more available sooner? That's, that's all, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a tough one, because my recollection was that we spent a lot of time working on cost containment. The example that comes to mind is a lot of the work that we did on the Energy Subcommittee, engaging with synergistic. We talked about that a couple of times at least in the board meetings, and it would come up during subcommittee reports. So, did we have an organized formal presentation at the beginning of the meeting? A couple of times, but I think that if you were paying attention, I think that you would have noticed areas where we talked about cost savings, so.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't say this is a glowing success, but it's not a failure.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I went back and kind of looked for presentations back through the minutes, and there weren't a lot of those, okay.
Right, and I, if I could just add to that a little bit, there were a couple of board meetings where just under the superintendent's reports, Wayne, and I would give a little tidbit, it never rose to the level of a presentation, but there were several, and I don't have them, they're in my notes, but that, that leads to the concept of, let's be a little bit more, if we're going to speak about it, at least put a bullet in there. And just a reminder, some of the cost containment initiatives, Wayne continued to have our vendors either come in lower or at least the same. Bringing our out of district students back to the district was a huge cost saving, savings to the district, so I think if we're, if the board were to keep this as a goal, we should have a method for memorializing it, even if it's.
Okay.
Put it on there and track it.
It's certainly a good, a good goal, yeah. Okay, so, facility, I mean, community. "To identify and implement opportunities to leverage existing resources to better communicate with the community." This is always a tough one. You try and communicate as much as you can to the community, and many times you think you have done a good job, and if you talk to the people who are listening, they'd say, well, no, you missed this or that. So this is a hard one to evaluate without having somebody from the community say whether or not we did a good job, in my, my opinion anyway.
Yeah, and I would suggest that the only one I can, you know, the only one, but it's the first one, where I've heard positive comments over an extended period of time, is the effort we put forth, and we discussed it at one point for a while, on the development of the capital budget plan involving the athletic facilities. I've had several people come back and say, boy, that program's coming along quite well, I can see from the photos and the comments on the website that's going on, and I'm amazed to see what I'm seeing getting done, you know? And I've had multiple people stop me, and some people stopped me a second and a third time saying, you know, and the updates really show you're making progress, and again, you know? So the utilization of some of that documentation, and supported by the Keep Hyde Park on Track group that is out there, have, have done a good job in that one area. Now, it seems, appears to me that that may be because it's a visual area, that, you know, it probably offered a better opportunity to some of the others, but we, we need to explore it and look, you know, why did it work and how effective was it? Is that approach available for some of the other things we've done? You know, might have been available in the sense that we'd been updating along the line with the capital projects involving the furnaces and cutovers from oil to gas and that kind of stuff, we may have been able to take advantage of that also.
Okay.
But I don't know how long Wayne can keep his Photoshop on the, on the, on the track of a daily basis, but not as exciting to go down in the basement as it is to climb to the top of the press box.
I think that we had some bright spots in this area. I think the process of. I think the, uh, the process of bringing our Facebook page on, you know, up to, up to par and, and starting to actively support that, I think it's had a positive effect. The other thing that I think we did, uh, that really helped quite a bit, from my perspective, was the, um, the survey, the, the exit poll that we did during the election.
Okay.
Uh, that was, that provided us with information, a, a wealth of information. So, uh, one problem area where we, we struggled was the quality of, of the television broadcast. We had technical issues, uh, both, you know, interfering with us, both under our control and not under our control. Um, late last year, the, the tech Subcommittee discussed some of those and proposed some solutions to, uh, to help with that situation. Um, so I would, I would say in general that we, uh, made some pretty good strides in this area.
Don't forget our television debut.
Ah, that's right. Fireside chat on, yeah. So.
Okay, let's move on to facilities, which was to receive two updates on the master facilities plan, on the facility steering forum during the school year, I know we received one, I, I couldn't remember the second, do we have two?
Do we have one at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, but I think we had, I'm sorry, I think we had a discussion regarding that as the fact that, uh, because we're in the process through the, the master facility planning forum, of coming up with a new five-year program. Uh, we were closing out the programs and capital budget we had and looking at where we want to go. I think we agreed that we didn't want to rush into presentations until we had that base established, which I think you, Wayne said, yeah, I, it was going to be available sort, sort of mid, mid fall.
And there again, I, I think that there was some communication that came out of the committee, I mean, it was discussed in meetings, I mean, there was some progress discussed. It, again, may not have made it to the level of being a presentation, but I think that there was communication and certainly good effort in the, in the, uh, in the group.
Yeah, there's no question that the, uh, steering forum met and accomplished things. Uh, I was just being literal on, you know, on the, on the goal. All right, let's move on to policy, make policies available on board docs and continue to update those policies, I think we have done that.
We burned out a few people doing it.
We, yeah. I thought we could get Tim to come back as a, you know, a community member.
I don't think we can make that an advisory committee, sorry.
I know. Oh, well, technology, develop a planning process for the creation of a long-term technology plan. Although I missed the beginning of the year meetings, uh, we certainly, in the later meetings, were working on, on that. So, develop is a nebulous term, so I guess.
Well, I think that we had several good conversations about this. It certainly set us up for the work that we're doing now to try to finalize efforts to improve our network infrastructure. And also, I think sets us up for actually scheduling work on, uh, a high-level technology plan. So I, I'm pleased with the, the progress we made here, I think we, we met that goal.
And I think if we use the, uh, the measure of comparing our, our, uh, ability or our place to, to move forward with that in context with and in preparation for the extension of this, of the state-required testing to be done all by computer device and stuff, we appear as, as least from what I've seen and what I've heard, to be well ahead of most of the other districts who haven't even started thinking about it. And, you know, based on what we're looking at, how any district could, who didn't get a start a year ago is going to meet the, and achieve the goals that the state is setting is, it seems to be an impossibility, unless they're going to throw beaucoup money at it.
Okay. In view of that, that we have to do a lot of infrastructure stuff, I just didn't want the long-term technology plan to get pushed aside because we have to do a lot of stuff, so I'll probably have something kind of goal on that.
I emphatically agree.
Okay. Okay, um, so that's, you know, how we did. I would like next meeting to discuss goals for the, the coming year. And, uh, if, if you, uh, have some, you know, pearls of wisdom on, on any of these topics, if you could send them to Debbie, maybe we can compile a list. And I would like the list to just be the list, not who it's from, and just, just a list of stuff. I, I, I remember last year, I was like, you know, oh, I was going to do that, you know, and I forgot. And then everybody else's name up there and it felt kind of, uh, so I did it already, already, I did it this afternoon, so I wouldn't forget. But, um, um, I don't think names are necessary, it's, that's my opinion, but.
Okay.
Can I, um?
Could I request a, uh, a reminder from, uh, the clerk, an email reminder on this topic? Maybe in a week or so.
Right, so that we have some time to digest them too, right, you want to get it advanced.
Once we get over the.
Can I, can I also, um, just make a suggestion to everybody respectfully, um, looking at these goals? Because, um, I've been involved in this before and didn't really do much better either, um, but now I've been, you know, my work life, been thinking about goals a lot, and you think about, okay, how should you do them, and has everybody heard the term smart goals?
The entire administrative team uses them when we do regular workshops, so if you, if you suggest that and need help, we can, I can definitely lead you through that process.
Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic and time-bound. You know, and so I'll give you an example, your facilities goal last year was a pretty smart goal because it, you know, was specific, two updates. It was, um, you know, measurable, yeah, did you get to or didn't you? Was it attainable? Yeah, that's reasonable. Was it realistic? Sure. Was it time-bound? Yeah, get it done before the end of the school year. I would respectfully suggest that your community goal was not a smart goal, um, pretty mushy. So I just, what, what I'm suggesting to people is if you would think about that, and I'm going to try to too, when you, when you develop suggested goals, keep that in mind and let's try to formulate, and we should make sure that we formulate our goals. Because I guess what I'm saying, if you have a very good goal that I think we should do, but I don't think it's smart, I'm going to push, and of course, there'll be no name attached, but I'm going to push for specificity, measurable, time-bound. And, uh, you know, make sure that, you know, that you, because you can check off yes or no, whether it was done or not, it's a lot harder, you see the debate you had. Did we really accomplish that? In some cases, you really weren't sure because the goal was kind of mushy.
All right, could you, could you put those?
I'll put it in email, everybody.
Actually, if, if you want, um, Kevin, not to, um, we, we have those all in electronic.
Yeah, okay.
We actually have the template, as I said, every one of our administrators, so we'll, we'll send out the definition.
Right.
Um, and the template.
Yeah, because it will fit to this, this task as well. And then the only other thing I would suggest is, is maybe we have a checkpoint on how are we doing on goals, maybe mid-year, right after the January break or the winter break in January, that's kind of a way to halfway through the school year, say, okay, where are we? I know I never used to do that when I was president, you get to the, end of the, beginning of the next year, how'd we do? Terrible, you know, we, we never really followed up on ourselves.
Yeah, we did review our goals at least once, and I think twice.
Okay, we're on to the consent agenda, and I believe, Kevin, you have a request.
And I have a request too.
Oh, yeah, on the, uh, consent agenda, could we just pull the personnel items out and do that separately, and then I want to pull up name out of that? Unless you'd rather just, whatever's easier for, you know.
Well, it'll come up, it'll come up individually, the, the items you want to pull out are within a single context here when we get to that point.
Okay, but this is a consent, so that, that adopts every, that, yeah, for section nine's a consent agenda. Yeah, and the particular items personnel, so, um, does it make sense to just pull the individual out and then vote on that separately, or do?
All right, well, first, we're going to need a motion to, uh, pull from the consent agenda, item nine point seven.
Personnel matters, all right, so moved.
Uh, is there any, uh, discussion on that?
Pull the motion out and set it aside to do separately, okay, gotcha, yep.
So we, we will, uh, we will do that after, just before new business.
Okay.
All right. All right, so for the ca, the items in the consent agenda, uh, may I have a motion, uh, for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a comment on the minutes of the July ninth meeting. Um, I, I sent you an email, but I didn't hear back, I just wanted to make sure I understood or where everybody else understood as far as the, uh, the lunch prices, um, and the confusion with that. I am not opposed to the lunch prices, but I also want to make sure we are absolutely transparent to people, what we voted on that evening. I thought we were voting on one thing, because I wasn't digging into the details and was looking at the agenda. And, you know, people in the audience are looking at the agenda that night that was provided in advance, and I don't know if the lunch, like, that's the lunch prices around there or not, whether it was in a table or not, I don't know. Um, but, you know, I'm a little concerned that we had a vote on that, we said, ooh, shoot, wrong numbers. Those were last year's numbers, supposed to be these numbers, you know, to my view, we really should have another resolution voting on it. Because anybody here, anybody says, oh, I read the details and I knew that they were different, then should have spoken up and said he got the wrong prices in the agenda. I didn't hear that, and I'm just as guilty, I thought I was voting on price X. And I, I didn't have an issue with what was in the details, I looked at it and said, yeah, okay, that's reasonable, I understand the rationale behind it. But, you know, to be fully transparent to the public as far as what we voted on, um, you know, I just, whether we do another resolution, even if we do it tonight, I'm not comfortable just saying, oh, we had the wrong numbers on the agenda, we really voted on this. Because, in my view, we didn't, we voted on what was laid on the agenda, and everybody out there, um, in the public who sat here and watched us would have thought that's what we voted on, and we really didn't, so. That's my only objection to the minutes.
Um, okay, that, uh, actually sounds reasonable to me, um, so we'll have that on the next, uh, agenda.
Okay, so I'd like the language just pulled off of there, that basically puts back what we actually voted on. And then we'll say, you know, due to incorrect, you know, agenda item on July ninth, you know. And I don't even have a problem if anybody wants to waive it tonight, because everyone thinks they voted on that. If they want to, if they want to vote on it tonight, we can all waive the twenty-four hour notice and get that rolling, just so that doesn't mess up the beginning of the school year and vote on, but I just want people in public to know what we actually voted on. And, you know, we can read it if we have to, read the table, what the prices were or whatever. Um, and so I'll let, you, you know, everyone else kind of comment on whether they want to do that tonight or not.
Well, starting Wednesday, the prices are going to be, uh, charged, so I would say, um, in that case, uh, we.
Yeah, but there, that was the point of confusion. Shall I explain the point of confusion? Um, when, uh, in preparing the board, um, the reorg for lunch prices, the question was asked, did, is there an increase from last year? And the response we received was, no, there's no change in price from last year to this year. And that was sort of accurate.
The July of last year.
It was the July.
But it changed some mid-year or something, right?
Um, the, uh, lunch price changed last August. So the price that students paid for lunches last year will be the same this year. So the students won't have an increase in lunch prices from last year to this year. What happened was, um, going from July to July, the numbers were lifted from the previous July agenda. And, uh, the recognition that the prices changed in August wasn't there, so, um, the July to July prices were copied, um, not the August of last year to, um, July of this year, so.
Okay, so.
So, so no student will pay more for lunch last year than this year, but if, you're absolutely right. If you looked at that chart on the night we voted and didn't have access to reading the information.
Yeah, we effectively voted on a different set of prices.
All, two years.
Right, so, so, so that, that makes it even easier for me to be okay with tonight, if everyone else is in agreement to just vote a resolution with the correct prices, because it doesn't affect the students, they're paying the same thing they paid last school year. But at least we have a, a good resolution, and we're not trying to sneak something in, that, a good resolution that's voted in public that says, yes, these are in fact the prices that we're supposed to be charging. Because I'm not comfortable, because really, whatever it was, I don't even remember the prices now, but if you go back to the agenda on July ninth, I feel like that, that's what I approved. And again, I don't object to the, the, the real price, the correct price, but I object to the process or the notion that, you know, if somebody wasn't really paying attention out in public and saw that, they'd be, wait a minute, that's not what you said the price is. You know, because they don't have the details, and obviously, seven of us or six of us, can't, can't blame Glenn, he wasn't here that night. The six of us sitting here didn't pick up on the fact that the details had something else and sort of spoken up at that time and said, ooh, we got to fix this. We missed it, so I think we all probably, if we looked at ourselves honestly, agreed that we really voted on what was on that agenda, even though that wasn't the price we meant, so.
In order to have a, uh, an item, we'll have to have the exact prices, do we have those listed?
I think it's what's probably in here, is it corrected on the, on the minutes? Is that what's corrected, is that the correct ones in the minutes? Yeah, so, you know, and I don't mind if, we rattle them off, we make a resolution and we vote on it, we can do that separately later. Every, you know, everyone, now, just so we know, when we pull a resolution like this to last minute, and anybody on the board has the right to a twenty-four hour or a waived, I mean, a right to object because there wasn't twenty-four hours notice given, but you all thought you already voted for this anyway, so I don't think anybody would object in this particular case, but I, I just want to make it right, I just don't feel like that, I'm not comfortable doing this. Um, and making saying, ooh, that's not what we really meant, let's just reflect the minutes to say what we really meant, because I don't feel like I voted on that. And I would just sleep better knowing that I did vote on it.
Okay, just so you know, one of, I believe, one of the things we learned in our Robert's Rules of Order was that, uh, it would take a, um, majority of the board, not one person, to, uh, object, uh, to an item being put on the board, isn't that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that may be Robert's rules, but, um, you might want to double-check education law, because.
No, we, this was given to us by our lawyer.
Oh, it was, okay.
That is education law.
It is, okay.
So that, that policy was said that.
That's what I always thought, and then when we went to the class, it was, oh, okay.
Either way, like I said, I'm not objecting to putting on it tonight, I assume nobody else would either, because, like I said, probably most of you didn't even realize it or think that you already voted on it, but I just want to make it right, that's all.
I agree with, uh, with Kevin, and I would like, like us to amend the agenda in order to affirm that vote, given the correct values. Um, and so therefore, I move that we amend the agenda to add a resolution for school lunch prices per the correct values.
I'll second that.
Have a second? Yeah? Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, I will.
We get to it, we'll read the resolution or whatever, and, and as a matter of fact, I'll leave the minutes up for the, what it's supposed to say and read the prices out, just so everybody knows what they're voting on, the public knows what we're voting on.
Okay, so, so we already had a, um, motion to accept the consent agenda, do we have to modify that so that we pull that item out of the minutes?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, basically, based, based on this motion, I'm okay at knowing that the minutes are probably going to be corrected.
Okay. Well, let's vote on this then, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Opposed?
We didn't have a motion for the actual consent agenda.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that's how we started the discussion.
We're in the discussion, we were under the discussion part, yep.
Sorry, one, one more time on that vote, did we have a conclusion?
Yeah, we did, we did. Yep. Right, it passed.
Tonight's consent agenda passed, okay.
So now, we.
With the correction to the minutes, that was the only thing, you know, that, that we were going to make a note what the prices are, I'm looking for them, so we can get it ready for the next one.
So now we have the, take care of nine point seven personnel matters.
Yeah, I'd like to ask that, um, I want to vote on separately on, um, we have a teacher being appointed, Stephen Nielsen. I'd like to move that, uh, that be voted on separately.
And, um, I'd also like to make a comment before we.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do you need to vote yet?
No, we're in discussion now.
Because the rest of the personnel agenda is, will be voted in block. I wanted to acknowledge three people. One is that we had the passing away of a bus driver, and I'd just like to acknowledge that we were very sorry to see him go. And that every year I attend, Wayne and I attend the Transportation Training Day, and George did a wonderful job recognizing him and having a moment of silence. So I just wanted to point that out. I'd also like to point out that we have two of the people on our personnel agenda in the audience. We have Mike Ruela, who is here, and listed as our Dean of Students, and we have one of our teachers here, who Cora will introduce.
This is Allison Nasta. Allison's going to be at FDR, working in our eight-one-two program, duly certified in special ed and math. We're very excited to have her.
So thank you, Mike and Allison, for attending, and you can listen to the roll call.
Stephen Nelson.
I, I have a comment I'd like to make, and I shared it with Cora just before the meeting. I mean, we see these names of, of people that we are voting on to bring into our organization, and unfortunately, to me, I'd like, I guess I'd like to see a little more. I'd like to know a little more about these people. I mean, we're, we're, we're an organization of people, you know, it's, it's, it's teachers, it's employees that, you know, that, that really make this organization work. And, and I was thinking perhaps we could get into something where, maybe we get a little bio, get a little something that, that tells us a little more, rather than just the statistics of what these people are, you know, what, what makes them, you know? Where do they go to school? Where do they work before? You know, what?
Are they from here, for example?
Yeah, where are they from, you know? Maybe they're, you know, may, you know, are the FDR grads, you know, anything, just, and to take, take it a step further and throw a photo into it. So that when we, you know, if we see you in the hallway or see you on the street, we know who they are. To me, it's, this is a people business, so, you know, maybe, and, and, and at the same time, I don't want to bury Cora in, in work and doing that, so perhaps we can put it to the applicants, to the new applicants. Let them do a little quick bio on themselves as, as part of their submittal. They could be distributed. Yeah, to me, it would mean much more. I mean, I, all I see here is a bunch of names and statistics, and quite frankly, have to believe that somebody's done a good job of editing them.
We get them to come up and like, introduce themselves at the microphone. That's a good idea. No, I think that's a nice idea. I agree, you know, that other part, not that part. That was my sick humor.
We are a community.
Okay, before we do the personnel, I need a motion to remove the name that you want.
Can I do that?
Yeah.
We didn't vote on it.
Okay, we didn't vote on it, yeah.
And we haven't voted on the full.
Right, in the full slate.
Just want to get this right here. Okay, all, all those in favor of changing the, modifying the personnel and removing that one name? Oppose? Okay, that, now let's vote on.
Now, do you need a motion for the rest of the slate?
I need a motion on the personnel as amended.
So moved.
Any discussion on that?
I just want on, for rather personal reasons in a sense there, on item C, the support staff personnel. I'm sorry. Item C, this is support staff personnel. There are two people I have dealt with for a, a, a large majority of the years I've been here with my kids in school. They've been around that long. They're retiring two of our actual building secretaries. Pat Reed, and not, Pat Reed worked in the guidance area, and she's done a fantastic job of organizing the activities of those people there and keeping things straight as much as they shuffle paperwork around. It's, you know, it could look like Times Square at 1:00 AM on New Year's Day if it wasn't for the activities and the organization she brought to that one. Liz Martens has been around, been around in a number of our buildings and has done a fantastic job, not only during the school day, but at other times, supporting activities outside of the, the regular business. She's become a regular. And the last one, and I don't really know Marianne Weaver, but I do know from comments, the registered professional nurses that work in our buildings with our kids on a daily basis do a fantastic job. An absolutely fantastic job, and it's, it's a shame to lose any of them, obviously, they're moving on in their life, but I think we should recognize the people, their efforts as a group, and use this opportunity for Marianne to be focus of the, of the people that we've, we've done and worked for so many years.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. We have now.
Now you want to do this, this, the other individual?
Right.
Need a motion for that.
Move on to, I need a motion and a second for the appointment of this individual.
Steve Nelson.
Steve Nelson.
Right, phys ed.
Okay.
Physician.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Hang on. There's discussion, there's discussion, right? Furthermore, we're, I'm kind of curious about what Kevin's reasoning is for this, but I'm not convinced that we can have the discussion in public.
Right, and, and I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote, but that's something I would not share in public. That's, that would be something I'd be happy to share with you guys in exec session, but.
So, I would like to adjourn to exec session to discuss it before we conduct this vote.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, can I have, I, I agree. That, that's a good, good thought. Have a motion to adjourn to executive sessions to discuss matters pertaining to a person, persons. I think that's good enough.
So moved.
Wait a second. All in favor?
Well, actually, could we have a little discussion?
No discussion on that?
Would, would we be better off just holding it until the end of the meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Going back into executive session?
Right, yeah.
And then to deal with it, rather than, I mean, we could go in and out of exec, I mean, it, you know, it'd be an exaggeration, but why don't we stay here, finish up the agenda, go into executive session?
That's fine, too.
And then come out in regular session.
I withdraw my motion.
There you go.
Okay, so we will do that.
Good thinking.
I think it's on the agenda that way.
It is, actually. We do have one built in, so, yeah, that's fine.
I do read the agenda, by the way.
Our agenda's in tatters by now.
We're on special education.
He's getting out while they're getting scared.
Run!
Sure, make my full, my first full meeting complicated, you know?
You're doing fine, run.
Yeah, all right. So we're at new business, ten point one.
Yes, nine eight. Oh, no, I thought it was.
No, nine eight, we never pulled out.
Who's on first?
Ten point one, so your education placements. Can I have a motion for that one?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have reviewed the, the document presented to us, and I recommend its acceptance.
All right, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
I'll move ten point two, consultant agreement.
Ten point two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one point of order. If you're going to move a, a resolution, I suggest, and, and something that came up in our Robert Rules of Orders, is that you use the terminology as stated in the agenda.
Oh, good, okay.
Otherwise, we need to read the entire verbiage.
Right, as stated in the agenda. I amend my motion.
Thank you. No, that's, that's important.
It's true, it's true.
All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. So now we're at ten point three, approved substitutes, special education, summer work.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, a quick question.
Why is it now?
So the reason for this is that we had a very limited number of people who were initially appointed to be subs for the summer program, and then a need arose for subs. And in the absence of people who had already been appointed, we turned to employees who we knew but had not been appointed in that role. So we are appointing them retroactively. We needed adults to be with children, so we took the risk of having people come in who had not yet been appointed.
So are we going to pay them retroactively, too?
Yes, although there are a couple who were on a sub list for one position and not another, who were paid because we didn't want them to have to wait.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Now, ten point four, budget transfers. Have a motion for that. I'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? On that? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Funding of the 2012, may I have a motion for the funding of the 2012, 2013 tax incentive reserve?
As stated on the agenda?
As stated in the agenda, yeah, I got to remember to say that, because that's a long one.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. All right, can I have a motion to set the tax levy and signing of the tax warrants?
So moved.
Any discussion? Just so you know, this is something we have to put our.
Everyone has to sign it, so. They're hereby commanded.
And we will be doing that at the end of the meeting. Okay. Ten point seven?
I didn't vote on it.
Oh, we had a vote on it, yeah, yeah. Anybody?
All those in favor?
All those in favor, huh? Oppose? That's good. It passes. The Giants are behind by now, anyway. It doesn't matter, you know? Okay, ten point seven, designation of official depository.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it's kind of funny that that came up, because I was earlier, and I was learning the minutes in the reorg meetings, why the heck are they in a separate bank from everybody else? And no one behold, that was fixed, so.
All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. I have a motion for ten point eight, as stated in the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
We're correcting a rate that was accepted at the re, is this, was that a wrong number that was at the reorg meeting?
I'm not sure which meeting it was on.
Yeah, Wayne says yes. All right, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Now I have a motion for ten point nine, memorandum of agreement with the Hyde Park Administrators Association.
So moved as stated in the agenda.
As stated in the, I almost got you. Any discussion?
Did we get a second?
Yeah, we got it.
I did.
All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. May I have a motion for the memorandum of agreement with HPUE as stated in the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Now I have a resolution for the memorandum of agreement with the HPTA as stated in the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. May I have a motion for ten point twelve, employee suspension as listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's a typo. I think I saw a typo here.
Oh, yeah, in the, in the parentheses?
Yeah, it's supposed to be thirty days, and it's three.
The word thirty is there, but we just want to clarify that, that, that three is a thirty inside the parentheses there.
As amended, then. We'll amend that. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Oops. My screen jumped.
I'll make a motion for ten point thirteen, consultant agreement to provide security for home athletic events as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Now I have a motion for ten fourteen, to close out of completed capital projects as stated in the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. May I have a motion for the first consideration and adoption of policy eighty-eight hundred, the energy management thing, as stated in the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I, I think it deserves a little more than just to be considered a thing.
A thing, oh, yeah, well, yeah.
It is a policy.
Policy, yeah.
Give it some respect.
This, this is an important policy because it sets up the framework under which the, the newly appointed energy manager can now conduct business and, and go forward and affect change in the district. So this is worth a lot of money.
It's a, it's a real cultural shift.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Oppose? Motion carried.
The motion thing.
Okay. Can I have a motion for ten point sixteen, recall of teachers as stated in the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in, in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. May I have a motion for ten seventeen, the recall of non-instructional employees as stated in the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. May I have a motion for the ten eighteen, first consideration, adoption of textbooks, that we saw the presentation on this earlier in the meeting, as stated in the agenda?
So moved. Second.
And, and just to be clear, we're waiving first consideration and voting.
Second consider, we're waiving second consideration, because that's the adoption, right?
Right.
Okay.
So we did all, all in favor? Any opposed? No?
We didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote, okay, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Wow, we're back to public participation.
Before, before we do that?
Yeah.
Can we do the motion on the, on the meal prices then?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. I have all the stuff up in front of me, so I can read it. I've been holding it here.
So just to review, we voted, we, we amended the agenda to add a, a motion, a resolution for the, to reapprove the, the price, meal prices.
Right.
So, Mr. Chan, if you would like to.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the meal prices for the school lunch and breakfast of the 2013-14 school year based upon information provided to the Board of Education and placed on file as follows. And then maybe the note would say that they were incorrectly listed on the agenda of the July ninth reorganization meeting and are hereby being adopted with the correct numbers, and there is no increase in price to the students this year from.
price to the students this year from what they paid last year. So, I'll just read off the prices here. Uh, we'll be voting on elementary lunch at $2.75, secondary lunch grades six through eight, $3.00, secondary lunch grades nine through 12, $3.25, St. Peter's parochial lunch K through five, $2.75, St. Peter's parochial lunch, grade six through eight, $3.00, adult breakfast, $2.44, includes tax, adult lunch, $4.87, includes tax, reduced price for lunch, $0.25, reduced price for breakfast, $0.25, and the breakfast price, $1.50.
Second.
Any discussion? More discussion? All those in favor?
Now I can sleep at night.
Oppose? Okay. Now, the public may address the Board of Education. I have a motion for public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Mr. Agoson?
Hi.
Regale us.
Uh, for the member, for the benefit of the two new members, uh, I've attended most of the board meetings here for three years. I came with the, uh, push to try to keep costs down on the taxpayers, okay? Tonight, I want to speak to board goals. Forget about my past, alright? Board goals for next meeting, if you're gonna bring it up again next meeting, vote on it, alright? The number one board goal has to be turning out a better product from this school system. What's the better product? The students. That has to take over above everything. How can you do a better job in that area? And I'll make one ancillary comment here. I think you often get bogged down too much in small details for the board discussions. Focus on how can we get better students out of this school system.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, uh, address the board? I have a motion to close public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Now, out of, anybody want to comment first, or you gonna let me?
I don't necessarily disagree.
Yeah, I'd say great comment. I mean, it's exactly what we need to focus on, and, and I mean, I, I, uh, I'd like to think, I mean, I, I do believe that we all come to the board or come with that goal in mind. Um, there's a lot of steps in getting there, and it's difficult to measure at times whether, whether we're making any progress, particularly when the, when the, the grading process or the, the measuring stick gets, gets changed. You know, I think we just went from, we just went to the metric system again or something, I'm not sure exactly, and even how to, how to put it, but, uh, by all, you know, I totally agree with you. That's, that's what we're all about.
Cora, you want?
Thank you.
Okay. We are now 12.1, are there any board subcommittee reports?
Just wanted to mention that the tech subcommittee met and, uh, discussed upcoming plans to improve the network infrastructure in all of the buildings, as well as the telephone system. Um, actually, we've met twice in the last two, three weeks, um, and we're considering proposals from at least one vendor. Um, it's a pretty significant, uh, step forward. Um, the driving force behind this is the impending state testing that needs to be conducted via computer.
And our safety infrastructure.
Sorry, yes. It's also a safety issue.
Okay, we are now on 12.2, upcoming meetings and events. Opening of school is Tuesday, September 3rd, Superintendent's Day, Conference Day, uh, is the 3rd, sorry. Wednesday, September 4th is the first day of school. Let me repeat that. Tuesday, September 3rd is Superintendent's Conference Day. Wednesday, September 4th is the first day of school. Upcoming meetings, Wednesday, September 11th, Facility Steering Forum meeting at the District Office at 5:00 PM. Thursday, September 12th will be the next Board of Education meeting here in the District Office. Also, starting, starting at 5:00 PM for executive session.
What, just out of curiosity, why do we get that starting so early?
Seven PM.
Five-thirty exec.
Five-thirty exec, yeah, and seven.
Seven o'clock, okay.
If you come at five, you get more food.
True. Really? I didn't know that.
You have more opportunity to get more food.
Okay, special events coming up. Mark your calendars. Friday, September 27th, the athletic facility ribbon cutting will be at 5:00 PM at the FDR High School homecoming football game. And we're very excited about that.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
But we do have need for a executive session. So, I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters of a, uh, personnel matters is good enough, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? We are now in executive session, and hopefully, we'll be back very soon.
Yeah, it shouldn't be too long.
Okay, can I have a, a motion to exit, come out of, uh, executive session?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Alright, now, um, I'd like to, uh, have a motion for accepting the, um, personnel matter. And we discussed, um, for Stephen Nielsen, was that Nielsen? Uh, I have a motion, please.
I move the, I move as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. May, before we, I ask for a motion to adjourn, may I remind you that we need to sign documents before we leave, alright? Okay. Can I have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The meeting is now adjourned.